Terry.
Good evening, Terry Higashiama. I'm the head of the Community Services Department. And with me tonight is my esteemed team that -- they're all here to support as we go through the CIP project. The interesting thing is, part of doing our capital program is that we are both an internal and an external company when we're providing these services to decide what works for the community and what works for our internal employees and what we need to do to make this a better place to work and be employed. So, as we go through these projects, you will see both of that and then how do we serve the public as we're looking at the plans? We look at everything from our Parks and Recreation and Natural Areas Plan and we look at the City Center Plan. We also took notes from your retreat that you had and talked about the capital and making sure we look. So, there's a lot of different elements that go into providing this capital plan. What we've also done this year, in this two-year cycle, is put in sort of some placeholders because we're not sure where we will have the funds to move forward, but we wanted to make sure we heard what the community had told us and what you had to have the placeholders there. So, those are in here and we'll talk about those as we go through this process. I think we want to make sure, as Council President Person said, is that we're taking care of our assets. We've been holding on since 2008, as you know, just being able to take care of things more in I would say a Band-Aid manner, but we want to make sure that we're getting caught up on some of those and doing them in the right way so it doesn't cost us more dollars and the public more dollars later on. So, we'll talk about a little bit about that as we go through projects. So, we're going to do a high-level walkthrough on these. Again, we don't have the dollar amount that we will actually have for these projects in the end, and so we'll have to look at that. This also doesn't take into an account, we get a lot of grants or matching grants, as you know, when we're doing some projects. PSE, for example, we have attained quite a few grants as we're going through some of our power improvements. So, this does not take into account because we don't know that we have those yet and so we -- it really accounts for everything being paid for by the city as we start to the projects and then those get adjusted. I think the key thing about capital projects is that it is about communication. We don't do any projects without either having public input or coming back to you and having input about are we on the right track and as Council President said, whether we have to shift gears because we had funds come in or we have an emergency situation that we have to rotate something around to make sure we're taking care of that asset. So, we've tried to plan for those as best we can. We can't always. This last year is a classic example when we had the steep slope situations where we quickly had to catch up on some tree issues, working with Public Works. That wasn't on our agenda for catching up, but weather and other things caused us to have to make that a priority. So, but we have to make sure that we're coming back and we're connecting with you on all levels of that. So, let's start out and we're going to go through this in your packet. You have the narrative for each one and there certainly is much more narrative we could have put in those, the space on the capital program, but we can come back and if there are any that you would like a more, a deeper explanation on, let us know and we'll make sure we come back and do that. The first one, and we did divide this into categories, as you know, there's only one under acquisition there and I would kind of, as we start out, it is an acquisition, but it's also a major maintenance because it is to look at possibility of some property down around Coulon to move the park's maintenance and out and to expand what we can within the park itself. We have some possibilities of working around the park and there's a couple parcels that might be available. This may not come through, but we want to make sure we're looking at that to continue because Coulon, as you know, is a very, very busy park and we're trying to, as Southport is expanding in the other part of Lake Washington Boulevard, we're trying to make sure we're moving along and being able to capture for our residents the best part for that park to run. So, there's a potential there. We don't, not sure if it will come through, but it is a placeholder of a million dollars in there for that. That is the only acquisition we put in. We continue to work, of course, for our May Creek and some of those other areas that we are going through. The Black River Repairing Forest, some of these are out in 1718, so I'm not going to spend time on it. This has been on the capital program for many, many years. It was to build an environmental center. That's been a request by the public for a long time. We bumped it out to 1718. Possibly we'll have the funds as we get into that time to be able to get that done. We do continue to work there and volunteer and it is highly used by the community, but we haven't been able to move the next steps forward. That is true also for the Maplewood Community Park. That is one that came in with the Benson Cascade Annexation. It's still managed by King County. We haven't had the funds to take over that park and we told King County we couldn't take over that park until we could manage and really update it to the park it needs to be. That's been on here since the Benson and we've moved that out also until we can find funds to really redevelop and redesign that park. Ron Regis has, is a highly-used, highly-needed facility in our city. Right now, we are probably the only city that doesn't have a synthetic turf field that can be used all year round and at the highest level with lights. So, this is to get to the Phase Two, which would include looking at our wetland inventory, environmental assessment, the construction, to expand, do the construction in 2016 and get the turf in, do part of the park, get the water in, the restrooms. Eventually, it was a picnic shelter and then finishing the other part of the baseball park. So, you'll see that Ron Regis is set here to possibly have funds in 15, finish the first, second phase in 16, and then move on out to 1718 and finish that whole park.
Terry, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second.
Absolutely.
One of the things that we need to take note of is that almost all our park projects are somehow impacted by water.
[laughing]
And that increases the amount of mitigation, the amount of permitting and the amount of time that we have to do in order to even put artificial turf down. We just can't say, "Oh, let's find out what it costs to put artificial turf down." And Ron Regis, as I was pointing out to me, that, "Well, that's close to the Cedar River and now we have to mitigate, we have to do all this other stuff," which really drives the cost up.
Right.
It drives the cost and also the amount of time that it takes to do it. And it's amazing, just about everything on this list is close to some waterway and it impacts us. And I just want to let the public know that and --
Right. Thank you.
Because I know the council knows well about it, but it's interesting to let the public know that why some of these things take so long and cost so much.
And we have a fish window and I really appreciate you pointing that out. We love the water and our public loves the water. We're very fortunate to have a river and other streams that are located within Renton and certainly the waterfront we have on Lake Washington, but it certainly is a permitting requirement that takes a lot of work by staff and a lot of specialized work, which we appreciate. We work with a lot of other departments to get these projects done, but often as, I'll give you an example, we're finally working the Gabian project down on the Cedar River and that's been five years to get done. So, it's not a swift process, especially when there's other agencies involved in it and the ones that we have to work with. So, all good things for salmon for restoration, but trying to balance that with human need is a big project for us and really takes a lot of work and a lot of additional dollars. The Spring Brook Trail Missing Link, that's been on our agenda for quite a while. We bumped that out to 1718. It's not an emergency, it's not a need, but right now, but we want to make sure we get that connection on Southwest 43rd Street and Southwest Grady Way. We continue to work with King County and others on our trail program as a whole, but some of these, we just have on here and we think they're very important and we need to keep them and you've seen this come through on previous budgets. Probably a key one is the Sunset EIS Park Development. You're well aware of this. You've had presentations on it. You'll have another presentation coming up as we finish our final public meeting. This is part of the library expansion and also the Renton Housing Authority and Culpitz. This is a highly-needed park in this, in this community there with the density that continues to grow. We need to, again, this is based on not getting any grants. This is based on us having to cover the dollars on it, but this is a substantial park that will be added to the Highlands area as part of the whole Sunset Plan. So, we have that as a design development in 2015 and then continuing on and it being completed in 2017. Again, this will probably be one that comes back to you if we get other dollars and other grants that we may be able to move this at a faster pace or depending on how we can move that, we have no dollars right now to complete that as we're working through it. The Piazza Master Plan and redevelopment, this is part of the whole look of the downtown that we're working with CED on, high level for our mayor, and I know it's a high level for you to make sure that as we look at our downtown to make it more active, more vital and more vibrant. We have, as you know, the farmer's market has moved over what we call Market West and try, and added programs through our farmer's market. We feel we have a great opportunity to redesign the Piazza Park with the Big Five site and work with our event center to bring that into a whole hub for the downtown. It's going to take some redesign. The original Piazza, although very effective, was designed for passive use. It was never designed to be an event, so that's why we worked the farmer's market around the nook and crannies to make it work and we draw lots of people, but redesigning that would make that much more effective involving our downtown businesses, the community in that design, having meetings and looking how we can pull the event center and I think would really add to the downtown vibrancy. So, we'll continue to work on that. The North Highlands Park Improvements, this is to bring back, finish after we've, we have one portion of the playground and I don't know if you've been up to the Meadow Crest Playground, but boy, it's a busy place up there. So, this now gets us back to finishing, refinishing the tennis court so we can have tennis and pickleball. It will redo the basketball court that's on the end there and then we will also put in community raised bed gardens. So, all of that completion around the grounds there, working with Renton Housing Authority and today, we'll be coming to you, but CVS, who is just opening their store, gave us a check for $10,000 for the community garden today to be added to that site. So, this is very exciting to finally get another, the schools done, the playground's done and to get all the elements and the assets around there for that community to have all those things together. So, that's the design and development to finish that off. Liberty Park, as you know, the playground is 17 years old. We were waiting to get everything done there. That's a very busy trail and connection and picnic shelter. We'd like to redesign the restroom. That restroom was done originally with that park. Needs a little, little work over there, as does the picnic shelter. We redo the playground area and make the connection from the trail that comes across from the community center on down to the Cedar River. So, this would redesign that whole portion of the park along with the library and the landscaping when it's done. We would also add elements of our adult exercise equipment in there and bring that as more of a community use along with better lighting and cameras in that area to go along with the new opening of the library. So, we'd hope to get that done. The accessible playground finishes out. We will close that out as we move forward. Fire Station 15, this is actually out in 2017. If you look at your sheets, it explains the pieces that go along with that. This would be based on whether we did a fire authority and moved forward on that station in Cannedale. Forty-five percent, this is your soft cost, is about forty-five percent of the project total, again, until you bid this out and you do all of the design and development. Peter Renner and the fire chief have done quite a bit and Eric have done quite a bit of work on this to have this ready when we have the funds to move it forward, but that would be based in 2017 and again, based on a fire authority and moving that forward. The Riverview Bridge Construction, if you've been out there, you can see we've got cranes on both sides. It's working very rapidly. We have a fish window on all of our projects on the Cedar River to get things done. So, that will actually be completed. We'll do Phase One, we'll carry the money forward and finish that in 2015. So, we will complete that as we move forward. In July 2012, you adopted or accepted a Coulon Park Condition Assessment Report, which was very thick. I have it here on the desk, so that we could start prioritizing this park. It's 30-plus years old. It's, as you know, it's the gem of our city, but we, it's sort of like going to the dentist. There's a lot of things underneath that have to be done and we have a lot of water walks. Takes a lot of time to get that done. We have shoreline that needs work. We have some restrooms. So, we're trying to prioritize those in a safety manner. We did the log boom. We're going to be doing the pavers next year, but we want to make sure we're continuing on to make sure that park stays at the top level and you'll see the funds spend out and it goes along with our manual that, and our assessment that we did to make sure we're staying concurrent. And again, I guess I want to preface that if we do have an incident or something happens, a large storm, something like that, that could shift around the order that we're putting things in and we'd have to come back with you and make sure that we're in the right sequence here to make this work. This has been a priority for the council, the citywide security systems, Greg Stroh from our Facilities Division and working with police and other departments to make sure that we have cameras in the right place. The cameras today are high resolution, high quality. We really want to be in the preventive mode of using the cameras so that we can look at things ahead of time. The police have the ability to pull up the camera visions, views from their cars and that really helps us be able to look and look at where we're working. So, we want to make sure that everybody feels safe in the city and our cameras are part of that to make sure that they're feeling safe and we have the ability to take care of it. It also helps us on our vandalism and making sure that we can look at things and make sure where we need to do better lighting, so it also helps us in our operations and management. Irrigation, automation and conservation. So, the next few ones I'm going to go through are really sort of a look at what we take care of every day. It's how do we take care of it? How do we maintain it? And we do a master schedule on depreciation on all of our parks. So, we're always looking at the courts, we're always looking at gates, fences, guardrails, everything that goes along with that. Irrigation is a big one. Part of that is because we have an obligation to make sure we're conserving water, that we don't have leaks, that we're using good equipment, that our staff is, it's time, it's effective. We're not spending enormous amount of times but doing regulators and automation wherever we can. So, this is a continued process. We have some parks that are very old. We have some that we're starting to transition over and some we've gotten on automation. So, we've made good strides, but we've got to make sure we continue. That's just good business and it's good water business. We need to make sure we're not wasting any waters we're going through for that. The park's major maintenance, there's a backup sheet in your notebook that just breaks that down. Again, you're going to see that the, it's divided into different elements where we take care of the turf, structural reviews, parking lot repairs. So, there's all kinds of things that go in that and that's just to make sure we're bringing in and we're looking at where everything's at. We've got to have that assessment to know what's working and pavement is a big one for us. We're getting where we've stretched and we've patched and so we're having to get where we have to do some major work on that. So, that's, make sure we're catching up. That's where you get your parking lot and driveway repairs, the ball field, the pass walks, patios and boardwalks and sport court repairs. Those are all the categories of all of our parks put together and into a sequence to make sure that we're protecting all that as we go forward. We have some really outstanding parks. We still haven't got to where we hope to get is, which is remaster planning some of those and making them more relevant. When you look at a heritage park and then you look at the difference from a Kiwanis Park, you can see where people go when they have a choice. And so, while we're taking care of the assets, at some point, we need some new restrooms and we need to get to the point where we're really redesigning these parks to be relevant to people who are living around them. They've stood up to time and our team does a great job maintaining them, but we haven't continued to add to the things that people need in their community around their park. So, we hope to get to those eventually, but right now, we're trying to take care of them with all the things we have. Habitat Enhancement, this is one of those we have no control over. When we do development, we have to then sometimes when, as was pointed out, when we're by water, we're required to make sure that we're monitoring and enhancing the wetland. And so, part of that is that when we have habitat or we've done restoration, if for any reason that gets washed out or has to be restored, we're responsible to restore that. Riverview Bridge is a classic example of that. Once the bridge is done and we put all of the landscaping in that needs to go in, if we were to have a major storm, in the, we would have to come back and some of that landscaping disappeared, we are required to come back and put that back in. That's on our onus. So, hopefully, we won't have to use this, but we have to prepare for it. It'd be the same thing in anything else that we're restoring or doing around the water and it's, and we could lose chances and opportunities to get additional grants if we don't take care of this. The Cedar River is very unique. It's a high salmon bearing and they want it. We want to get rid of knotweed, we want to get rid of blackberries and we have to restore it to native vegetation and we got to make sure it stays there. So, it's a big onus on our part. We're happy to do that. We want to make sure we're taking care of it. Tree maintenance is, has really several elements to it. It's not only just the removal when we have dangerous trees, but it also is an extensive amount of time getting trees put back in, replacing them and taking care of our habitat and our environment. It takes a lot of work. We've been piecemealing it for a lot of years. We have one person who oversees all tree habitat, Terry Flatley. We really say he's an interdepartmental team by himself, but when people call and they're concerned about a tree next to their property, those things have to be looked at and we have a lot of those that have not been taken care of for a long time. And so, that's, we're trying to get caught back up and really get this in line. When we get down to the bottom, you'll see that we're asking for a two-year arborist position. We have 100 work orders just in the safety one category that need to be looked at. Two and three get farther down to where trees hit buses and those kind of things, but we have to get back in line. We have to make sure we have a healthy forest and that our trees that we have along sidewalks that we have in the right of ways and taking care of all the new corridors that are coming into the city and transportation projects, we've got to make sure we're taking care of those in a, in a good manner. So, that's part of the project and it's a lot of work, but it pays off, I think, in the green and the environmental part of our city. Transportation Landscape Improvements, this is a new thing. We may need this, we may not. Here's what has occurred. In the TIB that we now bid for projects for money for huge transportation projects and our transportation and Greg Zinnrum and his department have done very well, as you know, by getting a lot of money for roads. What's changed is you lose points if you put irrigation in those projects now. So, we have to come back and put the irrigation in. We can get, prepare it during the construction of the TIB, but we need to come back and put the irrigation in to maintain the plants. Otherwise, we have to pay for also the water buffalo to water those continually, which is not cost-effective long run. So, $150,000 versus a $4 million grant. We need that $4 million grant. Duval's a good example of that. When those scorings are so tight and you're one or two points away, then we need to say, "Okay, we can look at that. We'll put the irrigation here. We'll come back and catch that up." We get a, we get a $4 million project. So, we work closely with Doug Jacobson and his team, Jim Sights, to make sure we're looking at these new projects. This is new. It is, it's looking at one side of it, but it's leaving to make sure that we're taking care of the other side for long-term beautification of our city. So, where these projects come in and where we bid, we won't know, but we put dollars in to make sure that we're prepared to take care of those when they come in. Councilmember President will remember that we had this in for many years. We spent an extensive amount of time just before 2008 to redo the kitchen at the senior center. As you know, it has all the original appliances and everything and so we had it all ready to go to bid and the economy changed and we didn't have capital, capital dollars. So, we wanted to put it back in because we think this is important to the quality of the building and the services that go on there. And we'll have to look at how it falls out once we know what our bottom dollar is, but we're working on the lights in the banquet room. We've changed some of the windows out, that sort of thing, but the kitchen really needs to be redone, the offices. We have a custodial closet in the middle of the kitchen. There's just, need to bump out, move the dumpster, but there's a lot. We have a great design and so we're hoping that somewhere we can find the funds to finally finish that project. The museum has become vital as part of our downtown corridor and now with 200 Mill and then the library. Liz Stewart has done a great job managing the exhibits and changing them out and the number of people has certainly grown. This is a matching grant opportunity. We put this in for her to be able to go out and look for grants to match. We can redo the lobby area. As you know, that is our historic building here in the city. We want to make sure it stays that way, but we want to welcome visitors in and when you step into that lobby, you just can't do that. And so, this is a redesign of the lobby area and the office area there so we can make that a little more compatible for people coming in and hosting more of our exhibits at the, at the museum. The Aquatic Center, hard to believe, is 10 years old. Eleven, I guess.
Eleven.
Eleven. Last year was 10. This summer, I will tell you, we don't lack for customers. [laughing] It's a busy place over there and the staff's done an amazing job. We do put in $120,000 each year into the budget for continued maintenance and operations beyond the water and that, we added a feature this year, a new feature. We want to make sure that we're adding elements. We're into boilers and those kind of things now at this level of the, of the age of the facility. Again, teams do a great job maintaining it, but we have to make sure that we're, we have, we're at the top of the line for operating. That's like running five pools at the same time. So, it's a challenge because each section of that pool takes a lot of maintenance and operation. So, when one piece goes down, Councilmember Palmer will tell you that it affects everything else in there. So, that continues and that's been the standard since we opened the facility. The Community Center Improvements, we're also hitting the age at the community center where we're going to have to do some eve work and some, a little bit. We do put money in our regular fund, our general fund for, for the operations, we're like for the closure and that, but at this time, we have to also do some extended work. We need to do some leak repairs. We're going to take the lockers out. They no longer are used in the, in the dressing rooms. More small lockers, more benches retrofit. We need new gym bleachers. We have original from when that, that building opened. Some finishing of carpeting and then making sure that we can, make sure that we don't have long-term effects of things not sealing and working well in that building. So, this is a little extra beyond the major maintenance that we do there every year when the building is closed and the definitions are there for you. We're closed now, as you know, for two weeks. They're redoing the racquetball courts and lots of work going on over there. So, we'll be back open on the 25th for the public, just to let them know. Where are we at? City Hall Lobby. We've had this for a couple of years. Again, we had a lot of these ready and waiting. So, we have doors that are difficult for us to maintain, the glass doors. They, we've done our best. We really would like to redesign that lobby area so we have a foyer and we have a break between those two doors and when we have somebody sitting down there waiting, you're not opening the door right onto the people that are in the lobby. It's also a little reconfiguration of where the police are and making it a little more customer-friendly when you come in. Energy efficient, definitely. We use, lose a lot of energy from that lobby, but the doors are a concern for us and safety in getting that foyer area done. So, it's lighting and so we'd like to complete the lobby area downstairs to make that more effective again for our customers coming into City Hall. We also are at the age where we have to replace carpet here. If you look at different floors on elevator levels and coming out and main hallways, we need to start replacing carpeting. We have some in people's cubicles that are very ratted and buckling and so we need to get to those and get those fixed. We would do that in pieces. They actually have equipment now where they can just lift up the cubicle. We don't have to disrupt a whole person's area. I shouldn't say that. Some people stack well around their cubicles, but it lifts it up so we can move the carpeting and put it in. We do use squares in most cases now so that you can have high wear areas and we're able to just exchange those squares out. And so, we've given you the information on the carpet that we need to do throughout the building in different places. The City Hall Roof, we've actually bumped that out to 2017. We had somebody come out and do an assessment on it. It's, I think it's holding well. We can get a few more years out of it, but it will need in 2017 to be replaced and redone. Now, again, if we should have some major damage or that, then we may have to bump that up a little bit and we come back to you, but right now, we think we're good till 2017 to do that. On the sixth floor, very busy area and you hear about the numbers that are coming in and the construction is the permit area that CED has for people coming in to work with the planners and to lay out what they need to do. That really needs to be reconfigured. In most places, when you come in to meet with a planner or do your permits, there's tables to lay out, your blueprints, there's areas to work. Right now, we have one small table and they have to squeeze over and try to fit that in. It isn't the best scenario for people coming in and really spending quality time. So, that lobby, we'd like to reconfigure and really make it more of a permit center so the staff can work closer. the staff can work closer with the people coming in. So we have that in, to be able to do the planning and do that in '15 and '16 to complete that area there. We continue to work on the community services shop area. We need to finish some work off in, over at what used to be the Forte Rentals. We need to meet some of the zoning required to get some of that asphalt up, get some painting done, get some landscaping in there, and then some work over in the other shop. So that's continued work. We have foregone the future shop we'd hoped to have for maintenance, and so we're continuing to try to kind of work these together, both the shop that used to be the Forte Rentals and the shop that's down by the senior center. So for both facilities and parks, so we'll continue to try to make that work for them. Public Works has a sign shop. Some of you may have been up there and visited that. It really needs some major work done to it and some remodeling. So we've put that in 2016 to add additional floor space for the sign shop. Construction would be a steel panel construction, minimal partitions, but would really give them more room to do the work that they need to do. They do a majority of all the signs for the city. Very few have to go out, and they do an excellent job, and we want to make sure that they have the space. Again, this is where we talk about both that internal and external, where our job is to make sure people that are doing their business have the best place to do that in. Lease facilities is nothing in there. The downtown wayfinding, as you know, there was an extensive study done about doing the doubt, and some of that was put incorporated down by the landing and some other. Now, as we work on that redevelopment of the downtown and looking at what signage is going to earn the possibility of changing one-way streets that we've talked about and some other things, I, the CED has brought up that, getting back to our wayfinding and looking at signs at work. This is not just a rollover of the previous study done. I want to be really clear about that. I've heard from many of you on that. This is about, you're giving me the look. This is about finding the right signage for what's happening in redevelopment downtown. I know Chip is here, and if there's other comments that he can share with you, but we discussed it last week. We want to make sure that we're finding the right signs to fit for everyone as this redevelopment goes downtown, and it fits with what the new message is and how we want this to look. So this may be some consulting dollars, is to go back and look at what's usable, what needs to be changed, and bringing it back to you to say, does this work as we look at the whole downtown as a plan? So I think it's very smart on the CED's part. I appreciate the other comments and the, that I've heard, and making sure that we, that we're looking at this and how it fits best moving forward. So if you have any other questions, I know Chip is here. He can help answer that. We have the Benson Cascade Park in here as possibility. We are still continuing to work with Bruce Anderson, so we just put some planning money in here. I'm sorry, I don't have anything more definite than that. But we do think he's on, he's been such a supportive partner. He really sees the need of getting a park up there. He believes it can work within his community that he owns and how we can fit that together. So we put some designing dollars in that so we can work with him as he's coming together for his plan. Again, I think there'll be a lot of conversations coming back to you on what's going to happen up there going forward. Community and economic development is working with him a lot. We've been having a lot of meetings. So he is, I think, a quality partner for the city, and we can look at some ways that we can get that park up there that we really need to. Also, some type of community building or small community center, something where people can gather. There's just no place up there for that currently, and we're hoping that we can work with him to make that happen. It's hard to believe that in 2016, it will be time to update our Parks Recreation Open Space by now, but we have to to get our grants. So in 2016, we'll just do an upgrade of that. We continue to put money in for Parks master planning. You know, we'd like to redesign some of our parks, but we keep pushing that out. As I talked about Kiwanis and Philip Arnold and some of those that we'd really, Kennydale Lions Park that we'd really like to redo. Same for our integrated pest management program. We moved that out to '17. The trail bike master plan, we actually do that with transportation. That helps us both on grants for the trails and grants for transportation. We do that jointly. The first time was the last time we did, I think it really, really benefited both departments. So it's time to update that. That also gets combined with the comprehensive plan for the city, so they all fit together. Part of our position, one of our positions is capital project coordination. Half of the salary comes out of our REIT, this fund. We'd like to get a limited-term certified arborist to just, it's a limited term for '15 and '16 to just get caught up on some of the tree and landscaping issues we've got in the city to get us back to me personally in a safe situation where we can really take care of these ones that are standing out there. If some of these projects are funded, we only have one planner. We're going to need to get a project coordinator, a planner, to come in to help us with some of these as they move forward. That's a limited term for '15, '16. We have our grant matching. That moves forward. We put $250,000 in. If we get grants, then that, we use that both in facilities and parks. If we don't, we keep moving that forward. If we use it, then we replenish it. It's used that way, but we have to show that in order to get some of our grants that were allocated from the city. Same with the disaster repairs. This is where something can happen. We need that money. Floods, fire, whatever, let's hope we don't have to ever pull into that. And then we replenish that fund as we use it to take care of things that have to be done in an emergency fashion. We have two grants. The 2007 King County Levy Grant, or I should say Fund, was a levy, is over, and we have $462,000 left in that account. As Councilmember Person pointed out, that is one that can only be used for trails and acquisition. We've been holding that to finish out buying those parcels down at May Creek to get the property on the other side of 405 and to finish that connection. So we're working with people that own those properties to maybe make that happen. So that money is acquisition and trails only. The new King County Levy that was passed in 2013, the Parks Levy, is flexible dollars. So we can use that for almost anything except for salaries, and that we can use it for remodeling for, so if we were to combine this, save several years and use it for Ron Regis, we could do that. It can be combined and then put into a project. So it's very flexible for us to be able to use it for that. So that's, that's kind of nice that that one allows us the flexibility. So again, we can combine that, hold it for several years, and then use it in one project, or we can use it and do matching grants. As you know, Leslie Betlock does an amazing job of matching things up here, so I kind of get out of her way when she starts looking. We don't have a lot of places to go for grants, and ours usually aren't huge, but when it comes to finding ways to put it together with the RCO or the state of Washington, and some of our legislators have been very, very good to us. We really appreciate that, as has all of you. It has helped us combine to get a lot of things done. I will also point out, our community's been very good to us, both in volunteerism, taking care of our assets, volunteering to keep the trails running, the senior center. And we couldn't do, even if we had these capital projects without the community that helps support these, it would be very difficult to maintain them and go forward. So it's that combination that really, I think, makes Renton unique and makes these projects work. I'm just always amazed at the support we have and how the community comes out for our public hearings to tell us what they'd like to see in their parks. They're more than willing to let us know what works and how that we can do things better. I remind people always that we are only the stewards. These things all belong to the public. We're lucky enough to take care of them, and we want to do the best we can. So that is what we presented for 2015, '16. Some of these are out to '17, '18. And what our goal is to come back and say, we believe we have this amount of money, and here's, and then sit with you to say what needs to bump out and what can we move to go forward.
So talking about this amount of money, if you want to flip-
Which Ewen will.
Look back to page one of the very beginning, which is the citywide summary with all categories of projects summarized in total. You can see the proposed 2015 and '16 capital project in summary has balanced unfunded project amount combined $22 million. So clearly, we don't have $22 million to fund these projects. And all those are from general governmental category that Terry just presented, and transportation. The rest of the capital projects in airport, of course, water, sewer, and surface water, they're all funded with rate revenue. So those are self-balancing accounts. The two categories we do not have for funding for are the general governmental and transportation. So I just want to make sure council understand that what we just presented doesn't mean that we have money to fund yet. We are only trying to capture all the projects we have heard earlier this year from council.
Thank you.
I was feeling so good there, dear.
I was wondering when you were going to get to that part. I just think, since you brought it up, Ewen, that certain of our funds are what we call proprietary funds, and the money has to stay in that fund. And for instance, the golf course is one of those funds, and it ends up having to pay for itself. So it doesn't take any city tax dollars to run the golf course. So they, if, we love great weather because more people golf, the more money we get. So we don't like bad weather. We'd like to see it stay about 74 degrees all year round, no rain, except enough to keep the greens green, because that generates more dollars for that, and even on the maintenance and the replacement of that building, which will be coming up, or upgrading that building sometime in the future. And I just want to reiterate so that staff knows that what I said earlier is that maintenance is our number one, maintaining what we have is our priority. And then as other opportunities come up, they'll be brought to the council, and we can make a decision on those. And that, there again, that comes like the grant dollars that we're talking about the last, where they're really specific to something, where we'd love to move some of that money over to maybe something nicer, you know, but we can't. So, but those opportunities will be brought forth to the council so that we can make a discussion. And I also think that one of the things that came out in this is, is the downtown is a priority if we, as we go down the road, and if, I'm hoping that the rest of council agrees with that, because if so, that that will be the direction that we'll take. Okay?
I guess if I could just close with, this is really a team approach when you put something like this together. It looks concise and tight, but the finance department, Ewen's team, works very closely with us, and I just want to say thank you. And there's a lot of staff that put a lot of time to make sure we're bringing the best information forward. A wish list could go on, but they really, I want to say, they really struggle to make sure we have the right things here for you and for the public, and that we're really looking after our assets. And so a lot of work is done preliminary before we ever get here to put this information to you, and I just want to say thank you to the staff that puts a lot of time in to make sure that we're bringing the right things forward.
Okay. And just to, before I close the committee, is that what will happen now, as I understand it, since we do have the concurrence of the council of the philosophy, that as money, as the dollars are, we get closer to the budget, the dollars may change a little bit, and they'll be changed, but then we won't have any further discussion on this unless somebody has some specific topic, and it'll be adopted with the budget. So as of tonight, this kind of sets up where we're headed. So with that, this committee, the whole, is adjourned, and we'll come back at 7 o'clock as a-
Thank you.
-call council. Thank you.